Pretty good at making them myself. And she sat upside down, you know what I thought of, right? At graduation, we had those.
Oh, yeah.
I had gone out to hand out about a half a dozen diplomas. And he says, are you from Watertown? I'm going, what does that mean?
They had an M on them.
Yeah. So I thought for all of those, I had my mask upside down. This wacky arrangement, now I'm seeing that maybe Julie's kind of not.
No, I can see that.
Just socially distanced. I know, but T, how are you? We might not be able to see you. Maybe a spotlight right here on tape. No matter where we go. How do you like our CEO class at Pennsyl Marine?
Yeah.
Last week. Those guys are really getting around.
I got quite a group there, one of about 16 or?
I think they're 14.
14.
And 21 at one point. And some of them bailed on us when COVID started and when they realized seven o'clock, seven AM class? But I'd like to see them all dressed up and I'd like to see them all masked up, people know they're outside.
What's going on in the gym?
Volleyball.
Volleyball.
What do they get? Two weeks and then the season? Okay, Chad, give him the thumbs up. I don't know if he can see you.
Probably all he sees is Jesse.
Jesse, he said the audio just cut off a little bit.
It's kind of like eye doctors and dentists, you only go like. You have to. You know, it's like.
Okay, he says it's back.
Pretty awesome.
Debbie, that's Jim Metten, he's the high school principal at school.
Okay.
And he is working on his superintendent's.
Oh, okay.
And doing 40 hours of internship with me.
Awesome.
Awesome. So, and then we have Ryan from Ellers on the bottom there. He's going to give us our report.
Good evening.
And where's that report? Got it, finance. Okay. Well, it is six o'clock. Let's get the meeting called to order. Start with the pledge of allegiance.
I can hold it here so other people can see.
Okay.
Maybe. Can they see it? Yeah.
Yeah.
Great.
Thank you, Sherri. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Consent agenda, what if we entertain the motion, Julie, and then you can ask your question?
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve it.
Do we have a second?
Second.
You could thumb wrestle Kim, whoever wants that one, so.
I put tape.
Yeah, I just had a question on the last one, the last person there, because I thought that person was on last month's. Is this a different position or the contract got changed or something? Okay.
This is a different position. She resigned from her kitchen dishwasher at West.
Right.
And now she is doing this and she is, and you see the ones that say one year after them?
Yep.
Were indicating that because they're COVID employees. And they know that this is a one-year position.
Oh, okay. I just thought she was listed as this, as this SAC paraprofessional last time as well.
Well, she, I might have accidentally got her.
Oh, okay, okay. Because it just looked familiar to me and I went back and checked and I watched.
I think we had a resignation on last.
I think they were both on there.
It could be.
Yeah, so it's just a duplicate.
Yeah.
Okay.
You know what? I think you maybe are right because I think we knew it and had, didn't have her paperwork in our hand and then we got her paperwork.
Never took it off.
Yeah.
Great, okay. Thank you for asking.
Now we know for sure it's being approved.
Yeah. And I'm going to need to just let you know, I'll have to abstain from voting on this one because I do have a family member that we would potentially be approving, so. Any other discussion? About the consent agenda? Alrighty, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Same sign? Thank you, motion carried. Communication report.
All right.
First one is for Mylars. So, Ryan.
Can you guys hear me okay? Okay. Perfect. It sounds like the volume had cut in and out a little bit. But thank you all for, for allowing me to just to give a quick update on the bond issue, bond report, the money that we're managing for the school district for the construction project. Hopefully you all have a copy of, of the report in front of you and just wanted to, to go to run through that and then answer any questions that you might have, just to give an update of the overall board report. As your investment advisor for the school building bond funds, we view our role in three categories really, with the eye towards managing the funds with an eye towards safety, liquidity and yield and the overall project and the goal. And with those three themes in mind, I just wanted to review how we're doing in those different areas to manage the project funds. So for the, the goal for safety, right now, the funds are invested in fixed income securities. I'm in a variety of different places and we'll talk about the portfolio composition in a minute. But with an eye towards safety of the overall portfolio that's been invested, the average credit rating on the securities that we've purchased in the portfolio are in the upper left-hand box is kind of the portfolio summary provided for you tonight. Near the bottom, lower part of that box is an S and P rating and a Moody's rating, and that's your overall rating for your portfolio that you have here with Ellers for the building bond project. And good news, the overall rating of your, of your portfolio is a double A rated, which is in the second highest category that, that we could possibly find. And so very, very safe investments for this bond portfolio. So with an eye towards safety, you are fully invested in a very safe way. We match our, the investments for the building bond project to your construction project and the dates you'll need to actually pay the, pay the bills. And so it's not a perfect science because obviously there's change orders and things that, you know, the project can be sped up or slowed down along the way. And so we need to keep an eye towards liquidity as well as the second project, task is, as far as investing the funds. And so right now, we've been able to disperse funds according to the schedule to get it, get them to Kim to be able to pay the bell, pay the bills. But we do leave some funds in cash at any one time so that we can make sure that we're able to, to make sure that the payments are on, made on a timely basis. And so that's the liquidity portion in the, the lower left portion of the portfolio composition shows what the portfolio consists of. And right now, we keep about eight percent of the portfolio and it says MM fund, a money market mutual fund, which is still earning some level of interest, but it's, it's available every single day. And so we could send money back and forth to the district to pay bills as needed, if there's anything that changes. So right now about $3 million are in a liquid money market fund while the rest of the portfolio is invested. And then finally, with an eye towards, you know, hiring us to manage the funds in a safe way and making sure that there's liquidity. Obviously, you want us to, to maximize the interest earnings on the portfolio as best we can. And so trying to maximize or enhance the yield for the district. And that's really the good news that I wanted to, to, you know, end with tonight is that we've been able to meet these, those other two objectives. And then also outperform on a yield basis as well. So on the back page or the second page of the, the presentation, it talks about income earned so far. And so as we have been managing the portfolio, the cash coupon payments earned year to date are $679,000. We're projecting another, about another $300,000 in coupon payments over the rest of the construction project, leading to an income earned and projected of about $962,000, about a million bucks in income earned over the lifetime of the project. And when we originally started this project, we, we gave a projection with Shelby McQuay, if you remember, your municipal advisor, back in February of what we, where the market rates were at at the time. And we were projecting that we could earn about $400,000, which was a, which was a very strong recommendation at the time as where rates were at. And so the good news tonight is that we're on track on a safety, we're on track with liquidity and are outperforming on a yield basis. Going to be able to earn the district about another half a million dollars more than what we had originally projected. And you might ask, well, how does that happen in, with all this stuff going on with, you know, the stock market and COVID and everything else? Well, back when we received the, the funds in February and March, when the stock market started dropping in March, the bond market actually took off. And so it was kind of an inverse reaction where the yields on, you know, highly rated AAA and double A municipal bonds, their yield spiked for a period of time and we had an opportunity to, to buy highly rated municipal bonds. And so it was being able to be at the right place at the right time, as well as being able to be nimble enough to capitalize on some opportunities for the district. And so that's what we were able to take advantage of and capture. And so your yield on a, on an average basis is about close to one and a half percent on a total return basis. But we have bonds in your portfolio that are earning actually over three percent, which is, you know, really unheard of and, and, but highly rated. So not, not risky bonds by any means, but highly rated bonds when the market right now is, is significantly lower than that as it is. And so the good news for the district is that if there are overruns for the project, you have a few extra dollars to help, help with that. But we also have the way, a few options to pivot along the way if we need to. So by owning highly rated municipal bonds that are yielding two and three percent, they're very, very valuable. So if, if there was any additional change orders or we need to pivot on the portfolio, we could always sell those bonds at any time and also earn a higher rate of return on a total return basis. And so our strategy is to buy and hold your investments to maturity and collect those dividend and coupon payments along the way. But if we ever needed to, to change strategies, you have the flexibility to do that. So, so all good things for the district tonight. Wanted to provide that quick report and then be able to answer any questions that anybody might have.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Well, you did a great job of explaining that, I guess. Thank you, Ryan.
All right. Thank you all. Have a great night.
Um. Activity director's report, Sherri, I see you down to the floor.
Yep. You probably all have read the activities director report. I guess it's all really important, so I guess I, you know, I could read through it all, but I think just I want to recommend that you do read through that. Everything's different. So would you, I think we'll talk about maybe the state high school league under discussions. And otherwise, this report is what it is.
It just seems kind of strange that the kids are allowed to practice, but yet there's going to be no competition until.
Yeah. Yeah, you're right.
Thank you. Um, Chad?
Can I say it is what it is? Thank you, I appreciate it. So a few things I want to highlight for you on my notes that I have down. Couldn't be much happier with the first three weeks of school. Last week was another matter entirely just because of the, the situations at East that arose. I'm going to address those in a second here. But again, you remember back to late winter, very early spring before we went to distance learning, I was talking about our literacy plan and kind of what my vision for reading was looking like. And very happy to say that the literacy plan is in full swing as far as development. Been working with our, I'm calling them our, our reading team. It involves our new intervention coach, Title One, and the data assessment. The four of us have met every Friday. They're, they're really, in all honesty, they're the brains behind the vision that I have. And I want to pay all of you credit to them. Storming, working with the students already at this point and we're, we are about 98% of the way through all of our initial assessments for the, for the fall benchmarking. We've got, got a few that just kids have missed days to take their assessments and that kind of stuff. So we're, we're making significant gains of that. They're in both buildings, which is fantastic. And so we can have that consistency between both of the elementary buildings, which is something that's so important. The, just as a reflection piece, like I said, those first three weeks were amazing. The work this summer that went in to be able to, to realize that, kind of speaking for myself only, of course, that the concerns that I had going into the year that, that we got off to a really good start and we're able to get everybody back on track. And school feels like school now, which is, which is a fantastic feeling. To get into last week now, what I want to do is I just want to give you an idea. We had three separate COVID incidents that had to be investigated. With help from Sherri and Melissa and a tremendous amount of help from Laura Danan, I, I figured that I spent about 13 hours alone last week just doing those three investigations. And so the different elements that had to go into it, and this is a checklist that I created. Sherri asked me to do it. She goes, Chad, since you kind of broke the ice, why don't you go ahead and come up with a list so that no matter what building it happens in, we can just pull this up and be able to go down. And it's already paid off in spades for us because I was able to use it on Friday. So step number one, contact Sherri. Step number two, contact Laura. Step number three, contact MDH via report form. Interestingly enough, there is no phone line for schools set up yet. So in order to make contact with MDH for the school aspect, you have to submit this electronic form, which maybe takes about 15 minutes to complete. Backpack letter, I'll say. The instant alert and the website update, but then the parents from me received a personal letter explaining what was going on. McCray community letter notifying Palmer Bus of any transportation changes. So with the first instance we had, there was some special ed transportation that had to be adapted. And that was one of those ones that as we got through, like, oh, yeah, we need to make sure we're getting transportation too. Notifying the kitchen for numbers reduction. Again, that was one thing that as you're going, as I was going through this process initially, it was like, get all the big things out of the way. And then all of a sudden it was like, oh yeah, well, the kitchen needs to know too because their numbers will be impacted. Notify Nikki for payroll, notify special education. So both Jane Grun, our coordinator, and Lisa Kraft, our director. Things that, that are also impacted like tuition for, for preschool, MacPACs, free reduced meal impact. And then we have Kim down here to change our, our status with MBE. And then lastly, notifying substitute teachers. So you can see that this is a pretty labor-intensive type of scenario they have to go through. And I'm, I'm very happy that Sherri recommended we create this checklist because it's, it will pay off for us in the long run. You have a question for me? It'll be my best answer when it comes to anything COVID related or of course anything with the school.
Oh, yeah, your literacy plan there. Is that, is that like pre-K through six? Is it all encompassing?
It's an elementary literacy plan. The Read Well By Third Grade Plan is a document that I have to submit every summer that talks about what our testing is.
Okay.
For our benchmarking and then I present that information to MBE. We have our Read Well By Third Grade Plan as a, as a template, more or less, is on the website. But then this literacy plan is something that just as, I throw, throw it around as a, as a round number. It should have been something that's been in place for about 10 years now and. Really hard to state. World's best workforce also. And so incorporating things like bringing phonics back in, having the intervention coach in place, they're all supports that the staff and the students need. And, and we're, we're getting them in place now. So it's just the recognition of the needs and then making sure we're throwing those supports in where they need to be.
Carmel?
How many positive cases did we end up with?
At this point, we are at four positive cases.
In the elementary?
In the elementary.
And is that all staff or students?
I cannot comment on that one, sorry.
Are you having all the students always sit in the same desks? Is that part of the contract? Contact Tracy makes that easier?
Yeah, and they have, so I think we talked about it. We have our hybrid colors, so the red and blue, so the green and blue. We're changing the school colors in case. And so then they have those spots. And like, so for instance, I was in a first grade classroom today doing a little observation. And I saw the teacher was walking around spraying the desks as the kids were going to their cubbies in order to get ready for snack. And so they came back, grabbed their towels, wiped off their desk, and then they had a clean place to sit. So yeah, it's, it's, it's really amazing how over the course of the four weeks, everybody's just following, ready in the natural group of doing what they need to do to stay healthy.
I just want to clarify, when Chad says spraying the desks, it's the, it's the Dawn dish soap and water with that kind of paper toweling, not fountain tea that soaks everything up. But we, we clean the human bio load off the desks first. So that we're always, always, always cleaning, cleaning, cleaning before the sanitizing. We're not asking any kids to do it.
It was kind of like one of seeds starts spreading and then all of a sudden you have all these tendrils that start reaching out. And, and I mean, there might be another seed that's really close by and you have no way, no way of knowing if it's from which one, that which tendril is reaching which place. It just, it's amazing that in over the course of a week, how things just, just spread. And I, I just, flabbergasted was the word I kept using last week. I just, it was just absolutely astounding what, everything that went into it.
Well, thank you for putting that together. You know, at least if nothing else, it's not when, but if it happens, you know what I mean? You've got at least a good, good blueprint to start from. I have a couple of questions about, wondering about, I've, a couple of childcare providers had asked if they could also sign up for instant alerts because if something, distance learning happens. learning happens again, that kind of gives them a little forewarning, because I know one provider now has to decline a family, because they're taking in a school district staff person as an essential worker and whatnot, so if that's something, if we could get that out to the providers, if they would be interested in signing up, that they would have that, is that something that they can, or?
Yeah, Jeff, why don't you take a note on that, and let's see where we go. The other thing that maybe Debbie plays into that is that we did not have any school age care people, I know we're kind of a little bit of a segue here, but we did not have any applicants, we, and we thought, well, maybe, and just today, Jeff's been working on it, and I think we might be able by Wednesday or Thursday to announce that we do have some school age care. Last, last summer, last spring, we were able to use our own employees and put them in there, but we don't have that capability now for a number of reasons, so.
Use some of those COVID. Some of our peers to be able to do that, they could do their regular job and then just pay them overtime, just a thought.
Yeah, and we talk about using COVID dollars a lot, as a matter of fact, we'll have a little report on, on some of that here in a bit, but there's other extenuating circumstances as to why we couldn't use our own staff.
Okay.
Which is different than last spring.
Okay, you mean for the daycare part?
Yes, yes.
Are you able to share why, or?
Hipper, hipper, hipper precludes me from talking about that.
You mean we have like, I mean, I, I totally get if they're, if they've got underlying health conditions, but we don't even have enough people that might want to work some overtime as a para?
The overtime piece we haven't asked about.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because perhaps that could be an option if.
Yeah.
If I could jump back real quick to your original question about the instant alerts, so like after we met with Bruce Mile, I'd reached out to area daycares, I mean, is it something to where you, it feels a group that, you know, a little mailer going out would be good, or a personal phone call for me, or the, part, part of my experience that is I don't know how to get them signed up, so there would have to be an extra connection that might take place, but we're just having them contact the school.
I think that might be the easiest, yeah, if they're interested in it, maybe not everybody is, but yeah. And then what about now the, all the East students, how are we handling meals for those kids?
Jeff?
We, in the backpack mailer that went out, or I'm sorry, backpack letter from me, there was information about contacting the school. I did ask the secretaries how much, how many meals we had requested, and it would have been right around about two this afternoon, we only have one family. Week's number one, but if we have to extend it for any reason, that we would see an increase then also.
So are the meals going to be delivered to the families, or did they have to come pick them up?
They can come pick them up.
And we won't deliver? I know other districts have done that, delivered right to the, to the house.
I would hesitate to say, I, to go to not use the word won't, but we could have certainly developed that, that's not a problem.
Because that could probably be the barrier why people have not picked up, they're either working or they don't have transportation come there, so. I, I would like to request that we look into that, I, I think there's sure been an insurgency of people signing up for that P E B T and SNAP benefits and whatnot, that I think could be, be a good, a good thing if our, our district could do that, so. And then also just a question about the temping that's happening, is there a reason why we're not temping the kids before they get on the bus? Because if they're running a fever, we've just got that whole bus contaminated now.
So I talked to Palmer about that, and so I go to pick up Tate, he's waiting at his bus stop, and now he's going to, what do I do? And we could have a para, I suppose, right on all the buses, but that was one of the the things, is what do we do, do we leave them stand there now, or do we wait with them, or how do we do that? So that's just kind of how we're handling the temping, is, is getting them on the bus, and then some schools are just handling parents doing all the temping, but I didn't really want to do that, because I couldn't count on a hundred percent temping that way.
Well, not everybody has a thermometer, yeah.
Exactly.
So I'm just thinking if we let them on the bus, so we've just now had an exposure. Complicated scenario, yeah, nothing's easy with this stuff, that's for sure. And we have enough P P E to cover for all the stuff that we're?
Yes, yeah, I actually have reached out to special education to, in particular, because they, they seem to go through one mass and those kinds of things, and just ask them, A, had you received what you had initially asked for, and all came back affirmative, and then if you need more, let us know, because we have the COVID money in order to start, start stocking up a little more as, as extra P P As available.
One more question.
Sure.
I know the previous meeting, when some of the parents came, some of the staff had done things a little bit differently with the distant learning, but are all the staff now within this two weeks, or will they be doing some sort of a, a full class FaceTime or whatever with their students?
Today, today was a planning session for them, so it's difficult for me to answer that at this point. I have encouraged them to follow the similar model that they used last year, just as an initial, because it was like, what model? The question that came up on Friday was, how do you want us to go about this? And they said, use the spring as your beacon. They were, the staff were communicated that what the parent requests were, because we took the survey information, that when, Sherry, when was that survey that came out, when we received all the parent feedback about distance learning?
You mean like early summer?
Was it the early summer one? When we shared out the information that we, they want more in-person videos, less canned videos, more time interacting with peers on screen, so that they could have the, the social interactions, and so all that information was shared with staff when we did our breakouts this summer. So can I guarantee it? No, is it something I'll follow up on? Absolutely.
I guess I would think after those parents came to the public. Any other questions or thoughts, or? No, thank you. Next report is our high school principal, Melissa. Sherry, you're doing that one?
Thank you, sorry to interrupt. Melissa is getting ready for coronation tonight. Her report is in here, in the packet, and additionally, I hope you all had a chance to see part of our C E O program, our West Central C E O program, and that's going well, they've had presenters, they're in their third week, I think, this is their third week of class, they've had presenters, they meet at Hawk Creek Golf, Country Club Golf Course in Raymond, and things are going very well, and besides that, you can read the rest of her report here. The coronation tonight is a virtual socially distance, going on over in Maynard, with the court, the attendance, social distancing, and two, two family members or two tickets per person involved, and Jesse's got to ski down a little over there when we're done, and get that set up for them, so. Yeah, that's Melissa's. If I could interject, I have one thing from Denise, if you don't mind.
No, go ahead.
Denise wanted me to share that, related to what Jeff was talking about, with parents who said, we want to know more about Zoom, we want to know more about how to help our kids with time management, how to help our kids study, so Denise created twenty-four classes that are, that were webinar-like classes. Kind didn't work, so she's creating a resource library of these classes, because they're already there, they already exist, why not let people have more access to them? So I just wanted to throw that in, that was, I think, a really important piece from Denise.
So that'll be on the website, and you can just?
Yeah, I suppose it'll be on your community ad, I would imagine, and then I'm sure she's going to have to hold it again.
Sounds good.
So if you have someone call and say, I don't know how to help, you, you maybe can point them in that direction.
Absolutely. Yeah.
And I would imagine the interest in that would probably go up.
Yes.
Thank you, on to your report.
Thank you. I'm going to start with, in addition to what I have here in the packet, I asked Kim to punch out for us our COVID relief fund dollars. Kim went in and said, yes, we do want that money. So the next thing we have is we have till December thirty-first to grab the one hundred ninety-nine, one hundred and sixty, one hundred ninety-nine thousand, one hundred and sixty-eight dollars, and wait, Kim and I have been back and forth on what should we use our county money for, what should we use our C R F money for, and I think you have one of these at your place, which looks like this, and so this is, all of the employees that we have hired due to COVID, we're going to pay out of this hundred and ninety-nine thousand. Salary, benefits, distance learning teachers, paraprofessionals, school age care, like I said, the benefits, the Benny's relief. In that money, so we keep watching, what next do we need, and every day there's something, isn't there, Kim? Every day there's something new that comes up, we hadn't thought of it before, but we've got the COVID money to help us with that. The county COVID money, we have no idea what they have, Candy Y and Chickewa County's account for about ninety-five percent, ninety-four percent of our students, there's some from Renville, some from Yellow Medicine, but, so we're looking to request from them the things that are easier for a county to disseminate, like, here's our P P E, here's our shields, here's our masks, here's our Plexiglas, because that doesn't have benefits and all that kind of stuff, that's a little, you know, this is just black and white, the Plexiglas costs are, Kim, do you have that, did you give me that too? I thought I saw that. Next page, thank you. Those are just cut and grind, we don't have T R A to deal with, or 403 Bs, so we thought maybe that would be easier for the county, because the county then has to go back and be able to prove all expenses, and so that's kind of where we settled on. We don't know, like I said, how much money they have to give us, I heard a little bit of wisp, that maybe Chickewa County's going to give every school five thousand dollars, but I don't know if that's the case either. So that is what we're doing from the county perspective, and that's what we're doing with our Corona Relief Fund dollars so far.
And that's why I haven't. Sorry not to use things that we can use for here and S R, which go into twenty-twenty-two for this, because this all has to be spent by December thirtieth, and so it's kind of a chess game, getting all figured out.
When will you know how much money you'll get from the counties?
We don't know, we hope we find out soon.
I would really keep pushing them, like in Candy Y County, they've kind of divvied up their funds, the cities each got a potful, and then now they've got it opened up for nonprofits, for businesses, and for Health and Human Services, so it's kind of like, I think you got to just keep asking to, to find out, yeah.
We were the first ones to have a request in for Candy Y County and Chickewa County that was prorated for the number of students in each of the two counties, and I don't think we've missed a meeting, there was just one, you were probably on it, Debbie, with Candy Y County a couple Fridays ago, maybe it was, and it's just, they've got a lot, they've got a lot on their plates to, to decide, because everybody wants a piece of it, right?
Yeah, and then the ridiculous part is to have it spent by the first of the year.
Yeah.
Right.
And spent appropriately.
Yes, yeah, yeah, and some of the counties are even asking for all the documentation back by the end of November, so that they can get everything processed and get it turned in, so it's, everybody's kind of willy-nilly different with that too, so, but, well, thank you, it's no easy task to keep track of all this stuff, so. So Sherry, was there anything else at all with your report, or?
You know what, some of it comes in the Minnesota State High School League comments, and, yeah, so.
Okay.
Unless anybody has a question.
Is required, but did everybody get a chance to read the email that Sherry sent out about Minnesota State High School League and their request for additional funding? Thoughts, let's open it up for discussion.
May I just add a couple more comments from my discussion? I talked to two clerical staff and the executive director of Minnesota State High School League today, and here's the new, here's what I found out, the Minnesota State High School League is not eligible for CARES Act funding. Debbie had asked me that question, and I thought that's a good question, because if they're getting CARES Act funding there, then they're getting CARES Act funding from us, there's a question, but they are not eligible for CARES Act funding directly. Eric told me, however, they can use CARES if it's invoiced appropriately to the schools. So on the documents you saw, it shows this, these rectangular boxes with thirty-three, thirty-three, and then twenty-five hundred in, in November, and another twenty-five hundred in February, so what it sounds like is, they're going to invoice those to us because of their experiences with the, I think in the packet, it said six hundred thousand dollars lost revenue, because they didn't finish the girls' basketball season last spring and did not hold the boys, so that was another thing, they said, if we decide to pay one, we can pay one or both in November, and he said, remind people, Eric said, remind people, they are only allowed to carry so much funding, they're not a bank, and. There's ninety dollars per activity, in nineteen-twenty, a hundred and ten dollars per activity, and twenty-twenty-one, now a hundred and sixty. There were some people speculating, why wasn't the State High School League responsible in raising their rates as time went on, but they were raising their rates. I remember being at a meeting several years ago, where the State High School League was presenting, it might have been the secondary school principals, and they were saying, we can't keep up with what the charges are to rent a professional stadium, but everybody wants, you know, everybody wants to play at Target Field, and everybody wants to play at now U S Bank Stadium, but in turn, they also don't want to pay, people going to the games don't want to pay fifty dollars for a ticket. So that's that, that huge economic issue of, of revenue and income and expenses, so those are just some of the things that Eric and Lynn and somebody else from the office and I talked about today, if that gives you more, any more insight.
So what have we, what has been our, our annual dues that we pay on an annual basis in the past?
Would you say twenty-two-hundred, twenty-two-hundred last year, I think Kim looked that up for us last week.
So they're asking for an additional five thousand dollars over and above their increase in the per student cost?
And that's at one time?
Yes.
I thought you said they were able to get the P P P.
They were, but they, but they're, and you may understand this better than I do, Debbie, yes, they could, but if they kept the people and didn't. They were, but they, but they're, and you may understand this better than I do, Debbie. Yes, they could, but if they kept the people and didn't.
Sure that you keep those staff employed regardless if they sit at home or if they're doing work, you will pay them. And then you can apply for a certain dollar amount and also about 25% of that, that might have changed at the end, could also be used for space rent costs, things like that. So if they did get that, their staff would have been paid or should have been paid and they should have gone for that money, I would have hoped. And that is also through the CARES Act. So that's all legislated or, yeah, through that, but. Hmm.
So if they weren't eligible for CARES Act, if that's a part of the CARES Act, were they not able to get that?
But they got it. She's, Sherri said they did get it. So they, yeah.
So they were talking about the, yeah, and I think that it was.
There's so many acts out there.
Well, what I read, what I thought I understood from this was that the PPP money that they were able to use, basically saved them from when they didn't have the tournaments starting last spring. But now we're starting a new school year with a new year for them.
But see, the PPP could only go back to March 1st.
Right.
Yeah.
So what happens if we don't pay?
Then we don't pay our portion of it. I don't think there's a penalty. I don't think there's like, you can't do this anymore.
Did they give you any input as to how they came up with that formula? Because when I look at it, the small schools are paying way higher than the bigger schools are.
Yep.
And I had an issue with that. It's, something about it did not seem right.
I agree.
That's the issue I have, whether if it's not mandatory, you have to pay it. Well, sure, we might agree to pay it, but the school down the road won't pay it. Well, that's not fair.
Superintendent, what have, what are there, have they had discussions like this?
This just arrived in the mail. Thank you for asking that. This just arrived in the mail, I think, last Wednesday, maybe Tuesday. We had a superintendent meeting. There's nothing but questions everywhere. Nothing but questions. I've talked to Eric this afternoon. He said he just got off a call with a superintendent who would like to pay after about five years in advance of these COVID dollars. So I have no idea who that is, but there's nothing right about that. So, um, yeah, I think, I'm glad we got it in September, so we have two months to make a decision. And your more opinions.
So if they, I mean, if they just go bankrupt and they not exist anymore, how does that affect sports?
They are everything to sports.
That's what I'm getting.
They are the rules guidance, they are the tournaments.
Legal aspects. I mean, does the state, it sounds like they don't get any state funding. I mean, does the state, the state eventually have to step in?
Could be, could be. I've heard people talk.
Deficit spending.
Yeah, likely this stuff gonna happen, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't have a problem paying your fair share and helping them out, but I, I wish it would be a bill.
A what?
A bill that you would have to pay in proportion more fairly.
Well, and like I had said in my email to you, I've, $2,200 last year for the whole State High School League for our kids, that's a bargain. To me, that, that's. But yeah, just, it's a big increase, especially when we're not playing. So.
Is that something that perhaps, Sheri, would you be able to have communication with the board? Want her to do that back with the State High School League to say, how'd you come up with these formulas or some feedback from our Board of Directors and see what response we might get? Maybe other schools are thinking the same way. They might come out better if they take a look at their formulas. Who knows?
Some schools are thinking about just paying for it out of the general fund, just being done with it. I would never recommend that we do all of that at once. You know, I might have said earlier, you know, maybe we should pay for part of it, but I think we need to wait and see what happens in that February timeframe. What's going on with COVID? Is there any money? Are tournaments looking?
Pay just one, pay one of the installments or get see what happens. You know.
Well, or especially paying the August invoice, you know, the.
The 2,200.
Oh, that's all right.
Is that something, what, Kim, what would your thoughts be if we took it out of the general versus COVID? Any thoughts either way or?
Not really. It's six of one, half dozen of the other, because we'll find something else that we can put under COVID too. You know, depending on if we have any of these ports, are we gonna be paying the coaches? I mean, part time, we might pay them half their salary, so we're maybe got a little savings from busing and, and the coaches stuff, paying officials that would help cover this out of the general fund too. It pains me to say we will be doing that, you know, but.
Is this something you need board approval in September or you can just?
We don't know. Just discussion right now, Scott. And then I hope to be able to bring back in October, maybe some more information, answer some more questions. And then I think in November, I think they'll want some sort of board action. But this is just, this is just to get it out there and talking about it now and see what you guys think and.
I know you said, Kim, we might save some on coaches, but aren't we gonna lose on activity fees for the students being in? So it's gonna.
Yeah, but, yeah.
Well, maybe we'll have a better idea in November, what our balance of the COVID funding is, what we've got, what we haven't used for our district's needs first. Because I'd hate to send any, any money back. If we have some extra after we have all of our needs met, maybe then perhaps we look at it.
So it doesn't pay to hold on to it.
Right.
Like my one thing is I'd like, what Cornell brought up, to find out why the bigger your school is, why they're not proportionate.
Equitable, right?
Enrollment wise.
Yeah. That's the smaller you are, the more you pay.
Any other thoughts? Okay, let's move on to our business items where action is required. A 1.1 motion to approve the title nine policy.
All right, Jim, can you hear us? Okay, where did Jesse go? Judd, can you?
Yep, yep, no, I'm good. I just struggled getting myself unmuted there, sorry.
Debbie, are you okay with if he presents a bit on Title IX? Absolutely. Go ahead, Jim.
All right. Well, Sherri said, my name's Jim Mitten. I'm principal at Bold High School. And first of all, I want to thank Sheri for working with me on this internship for my superintendent license. So I'm excited to be here. First thing she asked me to do when I talked to her was to take a look at the new Title IX non-sex discrimination policy, which was supposed to go into effect August 14th, but they, the sample policy wasn't even written until right around then. So that's why it's, it might look like it's going into effect about a month late, but that's, that's not our fault. Basically, back in, in May, the US Department of Ed went through and made some revisions to the Title IX regulations applying to sexual harassment for both district employees as well as students. And the, the policy itself, you have, I'm sure you've read through it already and they, it gives a lot of, a lot of procedures, how to go about reporting and, and all of the steps the school needs to take to make sure that everything is done legally and, and responsibly. I created a bunch of forms and a timeline and some other things that Sheri had asked me to do so that you can have that, some templates, so that they're ready to go in the, in the event that they are hopefully not needed, but if they are, you've got them.
All right, there are some Minnesota State, MSBA policies that have forms with them. And as I go through any policy, I make notes on my margins. And as I was going through this, some of the pieces just screened, we need a template waiver for this. We need, and you'll see those in your packet at the end of the policy, and that's what Jim worked on for us, a timeline for the grievance process that spells it all out. This is a document that, simple flowchart there on 52222. And this is a document that when and if we ever need to engage with it, it's gonna be really important that we follow the steps exactly. So anyway, Jim created the rest of the, the, the forms for us. So this will be ready. All we have to do is put it on a letterhead and fill in the blanks and, and go with it. This also comes with a lot of training that I need to do with principals and principals need to do with teachers and we all need to do with students. Like Jim said, it isn't just student sexual harassment, it's employee to employee. And this is very serious. It's a very serious policy. I appreciate Jim's help with this. And I'm sure he can turn it all over to Bold and theirs is all done now.
Well, I will do that. I'll look like a hero.
Any questions for Jim or me on this?
You need to have the schools legal.
What's that, Jim?
You need to have the schools legal counsel review this.
Yeah, so in the policy, you'll see, I believe it's 522-4, I am the Title IX coordinator. The investigators are gonna be Judd and Melissa. It just makes sense that they're with the kids, they're with the, most of the adults all day long. The decision maker in this is gonna be Jim Trulock, our AD. And the appellate decision maker is gonna be Kim due to her HR work and/or our school attorney, depending on the severity of the allegation.
Any other questions at all? And I entertain a motion to approve the Title IX policy 522. I'll make a motion to approve it. Julie, motion?
Second.
Scott, second. Any more discussion? Hearing that, I'll say or say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion carried. 8.2. Kim, do you want to give us a little background information on that?
This is just the levy that we have to do every summer for basically two years from now. The MBE does not have it. There's supposed to be a form that just says, and we always do this before the end of September, just maximum amount, because you can always reduce it, but you can increase it. So we just have the, the vote and the paper. They don't, MBE doesn't have it up yet. So as soon as they do, I'll call Cartmal and Lynn and sign it. But then in December, we actually finalize the numbers. But just every year, we have to do this. So that's what's going on.
Thank you. Do anyone like to make a motion to certify the levy for the maximum amount?
I'll make a motion to certify the levy for the maximum amount.
Scott, motions. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, take. Any more discussion? All in papers, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion carried. All righty, upcoming meetings. It looks like we've got a regular board meeting on October 12th at 6:00, November 9th at 6:00, and then Truth and Taxation. Goodness, December already. And then a regular board meeting the same evening. And we'll just have our regular board meeting right after the truth of taxation. Thank you. Entertain a motion for adjournment. So. Carmel made a motion, second. Julie, second. Motion adjourned. A motion carried, we're adjourned.
Thank you, Debbie.
Yeah.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Sheri. It was interesting, Vienna, board.